We have a nice crowd today. It's good to see everybody. Appreciate folks being with us today. The first section of our meeting today is where we welcome public comment. If you would like to address the commission, you may come to the podium here with a microphone and begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute rule, so if you approach your three-minute rule, I will ask you to please conclude your remarks. Appreciate your courtesy on that. I also ask that you address your comments to the commission as opposed to other members of the audience. We want everybody to feel comfortable in this environment to address us with your public comments and not to bait other people in the room when they have the same or different opinion. So if under those terms and conditions anybody would like to address us at this time, they can come forward.
Good morning. My name is Ray Steeman, 2444 West Point Road, Lancaster, Ohio. And I see that I made the newspaper again this last week. And I'm a little bit concerned because my name was mentioned. And it wasn't in a prideful way, but I just wonder what the letters that the group that I'm accused of, what the letter stand for? In there it says one word on the last one. It's in the newspaper all the time. But I was accused of not honoring somebody. I didn't mention any names. I didn't mention anything like that. But my name is mentioned in return. And on top of that, my wife was accused of giving information that isn't true. And the information she gave has been proven almost 100%. And I think it deserves a better word than what was given. A wise man said that when the people of this nation are afraid of the government, we have distress and chaos. But when the government is afraid of the people, we have peace. And people are enjoying themselves. And Ray didn't even mention the fact, you know, it isn't that the government is taking too much taxes away from the people. That isn't the problem. The problem is that government is spending too much money. And I think what we need to be aware of is that no matter what level of government you are, you have a right to protect the people. That's the number one thing that government has to do, protect the people. And some of us feel that during the last couple of years, we have not been protected like we should locally. Not because you haven't been doing work. You've been doing a lot of work. But we really need the Lord in us to guide us and direct us. And I don't think we're considering it because when it was stated that when God is followed by a nation, they are going in the right direction. But when God is dropped, the nation goes down.
Thank you. Please conclude your remarks.
Thank you. And I just wanted to give a short prayer for you. Lord, guide these men in the directions and help them to do their job with your help and following your guidelines in our constitution. Amen.
It seems as though government on any level wants to mightily discourage anybody who is fighting for our freedom on the national, state, and county levels. And also discourages those who know the constitution and also expect any and all elected officials who take an oath to uphold the constitution. Right now, many in high positions are saying that our nation is at the end of a Marxist resolution in this country, state, and county. I walked away from the medical field, retired, but I won't go into that. There are many higher-ups in the medical and pharmaceutical business, though, that are just interested in the big pay. Look at file sheet. We are living under a tyranny-like system that our founding fathers, with their wisdom and their knowledge, wanted to make sure that we, the people, would never have to suffer. Tyranny is fear of the government. Just look at what has been allowed to happen and occur through the decisions that have been made right here in our county concerning COVID and all the damage it has done. You commissioners say you couldn't do anything about it, but you know, or you should know, that you could have. After all, you have authority over 40-plus departments and are supposed to be seeing to it that rights and freedoms are never infringed upon. And many medical and teachers and ordinary citizens also know that you could have done something about this. Now, here are some of the results of the actions or inactions taken by the county commissioners. The will of the people has been trampled on. People will not be forced to take shots, not the second time, folks. People will not be held hostage to this biomedical tyranny again. And instead of healthier people, we now have many more citizens afflicted with many, many more diseases and illnesses from the side effects of the COVID shot. We all know that mandates are not laws and never have been. And it seems that government doesn't and never wants to be proven wrong or is afraid to admit they are wrong. Next, I want to speak about influence. Just why attack us, as was evident in the write-up in Eagle Gazette last week as well as a year ago in August? Is it because we and others who have also spoken out about COVID do have influence? Or are you trying to destroy the ability and/or the desire of the opponent to resist? Looks like every branch of the U.S. government is basically a vaccine sales bureau. Again, it seems like you're depending on Americans' ignorance of the constitution and what it does not allow the government to do in order to make this sick thing fly again. And it seems strange that it's coming at the time of election. And I have never, never appreciated my husband being attacked for having hate speech in that headline that came out a year ago. And that was never, that word queer is not hate speech, and he was not saying it that way. Okay. I thank you very much. And sorry, I didn't give my name, but I think you know I'm Judy Steeman.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Melissa Connor from 7710 Cattail Road. It would delight me to note, Ed, if you were to create exclusionary zones prohibiting industrial solar projects from being constructed on Fairfield County's prime farmland. However, it's my understanding that you do not currently think that this is in the best interest of the county. Okay. So if exclusionary zones are out of the question, my alternative request would be that you pledge to represent our concerns. The many of us whom have spoken right here at this podium have written letters or otherwise engaged to express our displeasure of Fairfield County land being leased, circumventing our zoning, to change our rural residential farming neighborhoods into an industrial wasteland. We would like for you to represent our concerns. When you sit in with the Ohio Power Siding Board to determine the fate of Eastern Cotton Tail, Carnation, Ripley, and any future industrial solar projects that come along, the Ohio Power Siding Board is comprised of agency leaders, bureaucrats, appointed to the board, and they have no connection with Fairfield County, not her beautiful and highly productive fields nor her people. You, however, do, you know us. You know we have labored and studied this issue ad nauseam. You know how much we care about this county, and you know how passionate and possibly obnoxious we may be when trying to present our argument in three minutes or less. You know. And my final request is a simple one, that the proposed land use plan be amended to delete solar projects. The Ohio Power Siding Board could interpret solar projects in the plan as being acceptable to the citizens of Fairfield County, and I can assure you, they are not. This gentleman, I thank you very much for your time and effort in putting up with all of us. But I hope you know that our hearts are in the right places, and I know yours and ours as well. We look forward to seeing that from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't be, you're all right.
My name is Betty Benner. I live at 4160 Baltimore Somerset Road in Pleasantville. As one of the constituents, and I said I wasn't going to do this. I'm sharing my concerns and reasons for the opposition to these solar projects being proposed for our area. I was born and raised in Lancaster. And my husband and I built our current home on Baltimore Somerset Road almost 34 years ago. We built our home there to raise our children in a rural community because that's what we wanted to do. We present rural residential, and we still are as of today. With that, if this goes through, we're going to be sitting a couple hundred feet away from these fields. They want to put it right across the road from my house. Few points I'd like to make. I recently read an article that solar panel contractors are rarely checking to the adjacent properties for flooding issues, drainage issues. It's entirely up to the farmer that leases the land to do this, that it's undisturbed by the solar panel, the drainage systems that are there, undisturbed by the installations. One of our main concerns is for the safety of our water, as the runoff from all of this can come directly onto our property. Our well is right in front of our home, and everything rolls downhill there. The rain, the heavy rain across the road, when we have heavy rain, it goes right into, right across our well into our pond. We have a small pond out back. What kind of chemicals are going to be in that runoff? You know, is it going to, is it going to affect anyone's health? Which I'm very concerned about that. Number two, property values. In our mind, another big concern is there will no doubt be affected. Why would anyone, anyone want to live in the line of fire created by these panels? Would you? Last year, we were hit by storms. And we sustained over $30,000 of damage to our home and our barn from the hail damage. Our neighbors also had a lot of damage to their home. If the solar panels would have been there last year at this time, they would have been heavily damaged as well, I'm sure. And what about the noise? Videos that I've watched, they create a lot of noise. Right now, we hear the birds. We watch the rabbits, the, you know, all the wildlife. What's going to happen to all of those? They're not going to want to hear it. They're going to, they're going to move out. Okay. Prime farmland shouldn't be used for solar projects. It should be used for our state's security and our country. Surely, there are other options for these projects. What about Buckeye Lake? Surely, you wouldn't want to be polluted by the overflow of water that undoubtedly is going to get there. And what happens to all these panels when it's done? When their lifespan is over? They certainly can't go in a landfill. A lot of other reasons, I'm sure you know, with all the concerns, many of your constituents have voiced their responsibility, our community, as to oppose these projects in rural residential areas. In closing, I'd like to thank you for listening and truly hope you do what's best for the people that elected you live here and not outside of our community. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Nick Bundren. I live at 3754 Sunrise Lake Circle, and I work for the Land and Liberty Coalition of Ohio. I'm here to speak in favor of property rights and utility-scale solar. Our property rights are guaranteed to us as citizens of the United States of America. Our founding fathers understood clearly that private property is the foundation, not only of prosperity, but of freedom itself. Thus, through the common law, the state law, and the constitution, they protected property rights, the rights of people to acquire, use, and dispose of property freely. Even if a governing body does not like the way something looks, or if their neighbors disagree with that decision to develop one's property, they have that right to do so. These rights are inalienable. This is what makes America special, and it's what keeps us from tyranny. If property rights go, what is stopping the government from taking away other rights as well? I think that we can't give an inch or else the government will take a mile. If property rights are violated, what's next? Are they going to decide where a pig barn goes, or are they going to go with something bigger and try to take our guns? Furthermore, the economic benefits that come from utility-scale solar far outweighed the downsides. Sure, you're going to have to hear construction for a little bit, but in return, your schools can receive extra funding for 40 years. This is decades of funding. These are impacts that children and future generations of Fairfield County residents will see long after most of us are gone. Tax revenue from projects can also go into numerous other methods of benefiting the community, for example, improving our roads and other forms of infrastructure. Is it really worth foregoing all of these benefits for the county just because a certain person or group does not like the way it looks? In order to maintain our property rights while furthering the development of our communities, we need to embrace solar and other forms of renewable energy here in Fairfield County. Kids are always going to need textbooks. Our roads are always going to need to be improved. I think this is an easy way to have extra money in that general fund and to help generations of Fairfield County residents. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name's Chris Snyder, and I'm with National Renewables, and I live over in the Somerset area. The last person speaking. We are going to do the Carnation Project, which will be located in Walnut Township. Last week, guys got thrown kind of a curveball. I came here to the, I thought the meeting was going to be here last Tuesday, and I ended up leaving some information packets for the three commissioners to review. Inside those packets, I left a little sticky note to our Yellow Bud Project, which is located in Ross County. They have a name of a commissioner and a township trustee. So if you have any questions about our Yellow Bud Project, you may contact those commissioner or trustee. But also, I know a lot of these people have concerns and everything. What I would like to do is invite you down to our project site so you could see and take a tour of our Yellow Bud and see what a site actually looks like after it's in production. So then I left my card in that packet, so if you would like to reach out, we could set up a tour, and if you would ever like to come down, you're more than welcome. Thank you very much.
Sherri Pymer, 3464 South Bank Road, Millersport. I'm in Walnut Township, actually. You know, I'm against the big solar projects on our farmland. And last week, when I was at the planning, the Fairfield County Comprehensive Plan meeting with the trustees and all of you, I was looking at the statistics, and I know Mr. Fix, she told me that when I got up and spoke, that solar really had no part in the plan. I respectfully disagree because in your plan, and with the public meeting output and the comments and everything, the workshop that we had before, you've got 30% of the people wanting to preserve agriculture, 15% to preserve natural areas, and 11%, no solar panels on prime farmland. Well, that's about 50%. And in your descriptions, in the planning area, it says that "a diverse landscape comprised of growing suburban areas, multiple population centers of various scales, thriving agriculture, and a rich natural landscape." This is in your plan. And it says agriculture must remain resilient, working farms, and the county's agricultural sector are important to Fairfield County's heritage and culture. And then it goes on to say, but if we develop residential on like one house for every two or five acres, which is rural residential, then, you know, that percentage doesn't work out very well because then you lose a lot of farmland to residential that's all spread out. And I understand that, and I understand that to pack in more houses in like a suburban development is much more efficient. And speaking of efficiency, solar is not efficient. In Ohio, solar is approximately 15% efficient. How many of you would have jobs if you performed at 15% efficiency? You wouldn't. We can't have solar performing at 15% efficiency in the state of Ohio, which is listed as one of the five bottom states in the entire country for solar efficiency. In the plan, there's a little blurb about solar. We need to either take it completely out because once this project, Eastern Cotton Tail and the other projects as well, go to the Ohio Power Siding Board, they're going to take a look at the plan, and it says, okay, solar is coming. Well, no, we don't want solar. We want you to represent us, we, the people, and what we want in our townships and in our county. Other counties in Ohio have either banned solar or they have been representative enough to when the township's request of the counties to ban solar in their townships. They have a resolution. Claremont County has already banned solar in seven of its townships, and next month, they're going to start the process again because they have another county that wants solar banned in their township. And what they'll do...
Please, please conclude your remarks. I let you go a little bit over because I couldn't find a break in there.
That's because I talked too fast.
No, I'm not, I'm not being mean.
Yeah.
Please.
Anyway, so if Walnut Township requests the county, if they do, we would very much appreciate if you would have a resolution to ban or at least declare Walnut Township an exclusionary zone for these large solar projects. The very people who are trying to save this planet are actually destroying it.
Oh, one more thing, real quick.
I like it. So one more thing, you know, you're getting here.
And this is the rest of Mr. Ray's, Paul Harman. I have, for the record, 38 pages of signatures on petitions
Thank you.
against solar projects.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Yep, sure. Never been to one of these before. I don't like politics, it's too controversial. My name is Barry Marshall, 11980 Merle Room, Southville, Ohio. So I know we are the third generation, Marshall Crane Company in Amahua. We serve many customers, rural and farmers, in that community, and we get on the other side regardless. My point to you gentlemen and anybody in here, you're all elected officials. I feel, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you, as elected officials, have a responsibility to follow the people's wishes, not outside influence. Yes, there's going to be growth. I've got multiple customers, customers, friends that sold to Google, Intel, whatever it is over here, and all around. And I see many of my farmer customers being developed. I've got customers, friends, that have leased to the solar out here. And I don't have words with them, that was their decision. But, again, you know, bring it up here. You've got a responsibility and accountability to the people that elected you. Please, please do that while you're sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? On behalf of the commission, we appreciate you all coming and sharing with us today. I'll have some comments at an appropriate section of the meeting regarding issues that may be of concern to some here. Mr. Darnell, how are you today?
Fine, thanks, Commissioner.
Good, yeah. Update on legal?
Briefly, we have our brand-new civil attorney, Sergeant J. Austin Lines. He joins us from Judge Barron's chambers, and he started yesterday. We didn't scare him off for the one day, so hoping he stays.
Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself, sir?
You.
Good morning, everyone. Stephen said I am Austin Lines. I am resident of the county here. I'm a resident of the county, so I am happy to be back here serving at the meeting.
So if you don't mind me asking, you have this very youthful appearance. Are you old enough to be a lawyer?
Just barely, but you give me a license.
Everybody looks young to me, so please don't take offense. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Administration. Good morning. We'll go through this rather quickly. American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. 28.6 has been appropriated, 15.2 expended, 4.5 encumbered or obligated. Projects continue to move forward and we will be monitoring those as needed. State of the County event was last Tuesday at the Wigwam Event Center in Pickerington. For the record, 320 were in attendance. I think the event was well received. We wanted to make sure that thanks were given to the Violet Township trustees, Barbie Widener of the Wigwam Event Center, and the Lancaster Fairfield Chamber of Commerce for their parts in getting this event put together. Highlights of resolutions. Administrative approvals are contained within the packet for anybody's review. There are 20 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting. Resolutions of note, there is various resolutions to authorize the approval of proclamations for National Constitution Week, National Preparedness Month, and National Recovery Month. Those will be presented here today. There are also two proclamations for September that will be presented at a later date by the auditor's office. A resolution approving an MOU between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Higher Education. This is for the $4.5 million allocated to the Workforce Center in House Bill 33, so we'll be moving forward with that. There's also a resolution to approve a grant agreement between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Medicaid to distribute a grant advance allocated by the General Assembly and House Bill 33. There's a resolution requesting the Director of Transportation review and approve recommended speed reduction from 55 miles an hour to 45 miles per hour for Sugar Grove Road. Engineer Up, did you have any comments on that?
So the section of Sugar Grove, basically headed out of Lancaster there when the Union Street comes in, we've got kind of that messed up freeway. That section down there has seen multiple accidents, some injury accidents here in the last year. I've had complaints from suburban residents in the area about the speed, so when the accidents started popping up, that's one thing that triggers us to go look at either an intersection or section of road or whatnot. So we looked at this one and it looked like it was a candidate to have the speed changed, so we went through the process of doing the study and it came out to be 42 miles an hour, I believe, is what it was, so we're going to send it to ODOT with the commissioner's blessing to change that to, I assume they would deal with 45.
And also another resolution on authorizing the approval of a service agreement between the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and Canal Winchester local schools for their resource officers. Budget review, Director Hampson.
I just want to thank all the department heads and elected officials for completing the Level 3 budget input, so thanks for all of you. We're analyzing that and we'll be reaching out to everybody very soon.
All right, so okay to move to calendar.
Mr. Attorney, questions or comments on those issues at this point? Calendar review, please.
Yes, Michelle.
Oh, can I mention one thing because I just muttered something that might not have been, people might not have heard me. I said, calendar review, please. I want to let people know that Ms. Demon and others have, at many points, asked that we have microphones here at our tables so that we would be more audible to the audience. And at the last commission meeting, that project was authorized, so we anticipate being mic'd up, so to speak, near term. I don't want to put a date on it, there's a little technical issue there with getting those things set up, but they're working on that and I just want to let people know that. Calendar review, please.
At 6:00 PM today, the South Leaking Water Conservancy District will hold a meeting at the Hebron Municipal Complex. The District Advisory Council Fall Special Meeting is August 30th at 7:00 PM at the Fairfield County Health Department. The following correspondence was received from Fairfield County Adam H., a letter regarding Venture Place, EnviroTrak and Environmental Services, sent a letter regarding an invitation to participate in the environmental review process of the proposed sheet at 9980 Bucie Road in Pickerington. A Lancaster Eagle Gazette article on August 24th titled Fairfield County Commissioner Jeff Fix urges respect at State of the County address. A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown dated August 23rd. Memo subjects were a revenue budget update, request for suggestions for their internal control manual, special assessments, and county demographic information. Auditor Brown also provided her wins of the week and a note of congratulations regarding the State of the County event. Letters were received regarding a Lancaster Eagle Gazette article, proposed industrial solar projects, the proposed comprehensive plan, and a CAUV property tax valuations. The Commissioner's Office also received a release from the Fairfield County Health Department on August 23rd regarding the Fairfield County Health District Advisory Council's Fall Special Meeting on August 30th at 7:00 PM. The Fairfield County Health Department scored a newsletter and a release from Fairfield County, Ohio on August 24th titled Visit Fairfield County's Trail of Scarecrows Makes a Cinematic Return in 2023. That is it.
That's it. Mr. Attorney, just trying to...
Thank you. Under Old Business, as folks may or may not know, the commissioners have meetings that are not public, not with each other, but with staff. We have staff meetings where we work on stuff and try to think things through. One of the several meetings I had this morning, I just thought I would mention, some months ago, I don't remember the exact month, but I was at a meeting of the Fairfield County Farm Bureau and mentioned a concept referred to as AMA. A little bit of a technical term, but what an AMA is, is an Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement. It's something I learned when I used to be a lawyer, that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission requires, for example, of pipeline companies that are crossing farmlands, they are required to enter into an agricultural impact mitigation agreement as part of the condition for Turk approval of a pipeline project. And at this Farm Bureau meeting, I mentioned that I thought it would be appropriate if the Ohio Power Siding Board had a similar agreement with respect to potential solar projects. Please know this is not a comment on approval or disapproval of solar projects. This is just a comment on something that I saw in my private practice as a lawyer that I thought would make sense in terms of dealing with solar projects. Make them do something, have some protocol and establishment of proper procedures. One of my meetings this morning was with staff and there is a move afoot from an acronym part of the state called JCAR, which is made a proposal, or the Ohio Power Siding Board has made a proposal to JCAR to establish something analogous to an AMA in the Power Siding Board process. I'm still reviewing that document, but it appears on the surface to be inadequate. But in any event, I'm somewhat encouraged by the fact that there's at least some thought being given to it. When I refer to that document as potentially being inadequate, that's not surprising at all. If I go back to my prior experience with what I referred to as AMAs, the industry, in my opinion, had kind of an outsized role in the preparation of what's referred to as an AMA. And so the AMAs are very industry friendly. Even though they're put out there as a way to protect people, they're really heavily driven, I think, by the industry. And I'll give you an example. One of the requirements of an AMA is that a high-pressure transmission natural gas pipeline be buried under three foot of cover. Well, if you're a farmer, if you farm, you know three foot's not enough. If you look at your grade, for example, and the fall that you need on your tile and the depth that your tile is going to be at, and you're talking about a pipeline cutting through your farm buried with only three foot of cover, highly inadequate. If you've driven in some parts of Ohio and other parts of the country, when there's snow on the ground, the snow melts first over the pipe. Why would snow melt first over the pipe? Well, that's heat transparence. Now, heat is bad for the root systems of a lot of products. So I'm only mentioning that little detail about AMAs being inadequate to illustrate my point, which is that sometimes when these safety provisions are made by government entities, their intent may be pure, but a lot of times it looks like the industry had kind of a heavy hand in the preparation of those protections. So I'm only going into that level of detail about one of my several staff meetings this morning to just let folks know that I am certainly continuing in my effort to understand all of the processes and the protocols and the research and the analysis to try to ultimately at some point come to an appropriate conclusion regarding the concerns that have been addressed. The commission has not made a determination as to who among us would be selected to represent the county on the Ohio Power Siding Board, but I suppose if I were guessing at this point, I might be in pole position on that issue, but it's a decision that hasn't been made, but I think I might be next man up on that. Staying under Old Business, Lancaster City Council voted last night to, and passed a resolution of intent to transfer transit, Lancaster Fairfield Transit, from the city of Lancaster to the county. The county has not passed a resolution of intent to accept, but the city council's resolution has an effective date, a target date of July 1st, 2024, for that transfer to be complete. There are negotiations that need to occur between the city and the county regarding the terms and conditions of that transfer. Those discussions have begun because lots of discussions were had prior to Lancaster City Council passing that resolution last night. But in any event, I just wanted to make people aware of that development. I think that there is potentially a point in the future, beyond July 1st of next year, when the transfer would occur, where the county might benefit from having control of public transit and the ability to influence that service in a way that would be beneficial to the county as a whole. So I look forward to, we all look forward to continuing those discussions with the city of Lancaster to see if the terms and conditions of transfer warrant the effectuation of that transfer. That's all I have under Old Business. Commissioner Lavacy, under Old Business.
So last week, we had a leadership meeting, the leadership of ODNR and Buckeye Lake Region Corporation. And what's important about that is, I've been involved in the Lake Region for the last 50-plus years and we've never had this level of cooperation before. And so at this point in time, they're working very closely with our Buckeye Lake Region Corporation to improve many aspects of the Lake Region because it does encompass three counties and all three counties are working very closely together. So it's good news in that regard for anyone who lives in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fix, under Old Business.
Yeah, we had a really nice State of the County event last week and I certainly want to thank our staff for all the work that they did to prepare for that. In that State of the County, my address was about public discourse. It was about how we talk with each other, into each other, not at each other. I did not name any names in any of that presentation. How the paper interpreted that is something that if anyone was offended by that, they can take it up with the newspaper. My point in all that was that there is a way for us to have a conversation about something that is important to you, that will allow us to hear you and allow you to hear us that is not counterproductive, right? And so I'm not going to recite the whole speech that I gave last week. It's out there on the website if you want to go see it. I'm going to do a video on it here in a few minutes. It's time for us to, it's time for us to find a way to communicate with each other in a different way that is more productive and that's what I want to see us do. Thank you.
And thank you. And if I might pick up on Commissioner Fix's mentioning of the State of the County, the commissioners do appreciate staff and everybody who attended. I got the numbers this morning on the final count. In 2022, we had 236 paid attendance at the State of the County and in 2023, that number jumped to 320. And so we were really encouraged by that. We think that's a, I'm not really sure what it means, but it's over a 30% year-over-year increase and that's unusual and appreciate it. So we really enjoyed that. We'll move on to New Business. Under New Business, I had another staff meeting this morning because I had asked a question. I was just curious about what the county entity, the county as an entity, spends on the cost of electricity each year. And I got that number this morning. 2024 estimate is $1.1 million. I was, I guess not terribly surprised by that number. I mean, I asked for the number because I thought it was going to be extraordinarily high and it is. And that number has been influenced over the last decade by a number of projects that we've authorized that were designed to make some of our buildings more energy efficient. And so that number would be a few hundred thousand dollars higher on an annual basis but for some of those projects. So that particular staff meeting this morning was part of a continuing process where we go back kind of and evaluate past decisions and past expenditures with an eye towards whether they are properly influencing out-year costs. But in any event, I found that number to be of some interest and so I mentioned it now. That's all I have under New Business. Commissioner Lavacy, under New Business.
So starting tomorrow, Fairfield, or the Millersport Sweet Corn Festival starts with the parade and anybody that would like to attend, be prepared for a long wait because the weather's supposed to be good and zero chance of rain, so...
Now, why'd you have to say that up there?
I can't help myself. I'm one block away from the Sweet Corn Festival, so the traffic impacts me very much, but it's a great community event. I believe over 100,000 people attended and they all drive by my place and they don't stop and buy poach weather there.
Any pregameing going on at the Lavacy House? He doesn't drink. I do.
Be prepared each week and donuts. If you've ever been there, everybody eats the donuts, so...
Commissioner Fix, under New Business.
I can't follow that.
Well, I know that my family enjoys the Sweet Corn Festival. We were talking about it last night and looking at our calendar of events and trying to figure out when we could get up there and it looks like we're going to try to get up there Saturday night, so we'll give you a honk on our way by, Commissioner.
You can park the arena if you wish.
We're glad to have with us today Treasurer Jim Bonson.
Clearly excited to be here.
I am excited to be here.
Startled him.
I'm getting hungry if you have sweet corn right now.
I get it.
On occasion, I mention both the first half and the second half of elections and just sort of interestingly, how do we get the tax bills out? 55% of the tax bills are actually mailed out to the property owner. It's 45% that go to mortgage companies. So the nice thing about the mortgage... So the nice thing about the mortgage companies is that they get a file of what the taxes are, and they enter and send us a file with a very large letter transfer, so that we were able to go ahead and upload that. The other 55% physically comes into the office and we have the process of the process. And everyone have a good Labor Day weekend. It should be a great weekend, otherwise, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us today. County Recorder Lisa, how are you doing?
I'm very well.
Good.
I don't have anything new to report from the office, but I do want to thank everyone for a wonderful State of the County. It was great to sit with some folks and make new connections. So those numbers being brought in, some folks that we've not seen there before, and we were able to meet and greet some new folks and make some good connections for the future.
Thank you. Appreciate you being at the State of the County and, of course, being with us today. Thank you. Jeremiah Up, how are you doing? County engineer.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Anything else you'd like to share today?
We're just, we're finishing up construction right now. We're getting our bridges back open. Of course, we all talked about Coop Path and how nice it must get that open. We've still got a little bit of painting to do and some smaller colorings, but getting that stuff wrapped up and start getting the guys ready for winter here in about a month and a half. October's when we do that, and just moving along.
Well, we appreciate the work that you and your entire team are doing out there, and I know I've mentioned it before, but that turnaround on Coop Path was really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Auditor Dr. Brown, how are you today?
Hey, Commissioner. Thank you again for a very good State of the County address. We had several employees who had never been to the State of the County address before, and they commented how impressed they were with the connections and the opportunity to be able to attend such an event. And we've had several conversations to follow up with that, mostly centered around how in Fairfield County, there's a great deal of coordination, great deal of collaboration amongst officials and amongst our stakeholders. As an example of that, we want to say thank you to EMA and to the sheriff. Think about those exceptional things that we do that aren't part of, you know, the code and that aren't part of what we would normally have assigned to folks, and they have recently conducted desk exercises for the Continuing Operations Plan as well as the ASAP Plan. And that was unprompted and something that they did on their own, and they even talked about that as they were connecting at the State of the County address. So I wanted to mention that, and thank you for those opportunities. On September 21st, I want to mention again that we have our Real Estate Summit, serving those who have served, and we're not asking for pre-registration. We did get from the Department of Commerce credit for two and a half hours of continuing education, and we're looking forward to that. If it goes well, we'll continue to have them maybe make it better, but we're just testing that to see what the interest is. I want to also mention that as a revenue update, in Level 3, there's $61.5 million, which mirrors what is there now, and there's reasons for that. There are increases for, you know, minor increases for property taxes, not the same kind of increase that we experienced previously because of the triennial that was the past year as opposed to this year. In addition, there's several categories that are held flat, major categories that are held flat based upon what we experience in terms of our fund balances for interest and in terms of other things that we might expect. And then there are some categories that we think will reduce, like indigent defense reimbursement and charges for services, even conveyance fees. There aren't as many homes to convey, so that is something that will affect that number. There is no transfer for a certificate entitled. Last budget cycle, we started with $56.6 million and then made adjustments in the first quarter based upon things that we learned in the first quarter, and it's 61.5 and has been 61.5 since then. Just want to mention that a little bit as we think about the planning the next couple of months. With Labor Day, I do wish everybody a wonderful Labor Day, and one of the proclamations that we're reserving to send out in person to all the payroll officers is for Payroll Appreciation Week, which happens to fall in Labor Day, and we're going to add some things to that and send that out to everybody who processes payroll at the departmental level. And then the other proclamation we're reserving for our Listen and Learn, which we've invited a few folks in, and just to stick with your process of doing that prior to the month that follows, we'll have that ready.
Well, thank you, and thank you for being with us here today. Do we have the, where are the proclamations? Thank you. We will, we'll go up today, guys. If you would please rise if you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the sovereign and just its claims, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Fairfield County offices will be closed this coming Monday, September 4th, in observance of Labor Day.
Thank you. Move on to approval of review of regular minutes for August 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero.
Move on to approval of State of the County minutes for August 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Please start roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes for the State of the County pass three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023-8.29.a, a resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
We have several proclamations today, and the first is going to be the proclamation recognizing September as National Recovery Month, and I am not sure who we have with us today to receive. Of course, it would be Adam A. So the commission remains concerned regarding the situation that a number of our folks are in in our community regarding drug addiction and mental health, too. We're keenly aware that those things are related in many instances. We're pleased to have with us today the Executive Director for Adam Marcy Fields, and I wondered if you might like to share a few words?
Certainly. We appreciate the recognition and the proclamation. We continue to work every day to build the recovery of people in our county, so we appreciate your recognition.
We appreciate you being with us today and the work that you and your staff do every day to try to fight the fight that some days seems unwarrantable, but thank you for doing it. One, two, three. Also have a proclamation recognizing September as National Preparedness Month. I think we have some representatives from our Emergency Management Agency. If you'd like to join me. So we're certainly happy to recognize this month as National Preparedness Month. If folks were like listening intently, you might have heard Dr. Brown mention earlier that some work that's currently being done to update and make people aware of what's called the Continuation of Operations Plan. Emergency Management's heavily involved in that process. And you may think, like I used to think, that that's just a document, we're never going to need that, and then March of 2020, we needed the Continuation of Operations Plan like there was no tomorrow. And it's fun like many local governments throughout the country. Fairfield County did not experience a disruption in service to our community because we were able to implement the Continuation of Operations Plan, which did account for the possibility of a pandemic and how we would operate under those circumstances. So I just mentioned that as an example of what preparedness can mean to the community in that specific example. The folks at EMA, they prepare for multiple scenarios, no matter how unlikely they may seem, to see how we would behave and how we would operate in those difficult circumstances. So in addition to the proclamation, we continue to thank them for their good work and service that helped the people of this community, so thank you.
I recommend everyone in the room, for National Preparedness Month, take some time, review your emergency plans, make sure you have an emergency supply kit, and follow our social media. The theme for this year is preparing older adults for disasters, so we'll be sharing a lot of information that relates to that.
Hold that for a picture here. One, two, three. One, two, three. The last proclamation we have, the commissioners will receive, and this is a proclamation recognizing Constitution Week. Folks may or may not know, I mean, I mention it occasionally, I used to be a lawyer, but one of the finest periods in my trajectory of becoming a lawyer was the opportunity to study constitutional law under Charles Allen Wright. And folks may not know who Charles Allen Wright was, but in the world of constitutional interpretation, he's considered one of the most preeminent thinkers about the Constitution of the 20th century. Charles Allen Wright was what would be called an original intent kind of person. That's a way of looking at the Constitution through its original intent versus, say, for example, a living, breathing document that changes with the times regardless of amendment. I'm proud to consider myself an original intenter. If you want a Constitution changed, there's a process for doing that, but in any event, the commissioners are pleased to receive this proclamation from ourselves. I don't know. And recognizing the significance and importance of the Constitution, which we very much respect and appreciate, if my colleagues would join me for a photo. They're laughing at me, I don't know why. One, two, three.
Years is coming later, I guess, than we're. Sorry for the misunderstanding.
So what, you might have saw some whispering going on in a public meeting, and the reason was we saw some folks here that we thought might be anticipating a proclamation. Also, that proclamation is not ready, and so we are apologizing for any miscommunication on that issue, but the commissioners do continue our unabated support for meals on meals, the service they provide, and we look forward to correcting that miscommunication and enjoying that moment at another time. Further discussion? Please start roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Also from the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023-8.29.b, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Higher Education.
Under Commissioners, I move items B, C, and D.
Second.
Discussion.
This is agreed with the Department of Education, higher ed, and the county for the $4.5 million for upgrades to the workforce center. That will include some building upgrades, equipment upgrades and engineering technology, some healthcare programs, and some equipment for construction upgrades, a lot of colleges with their programs. So appreciate all the commissioner's support and help in helping us to get this funding and all the programs in the area. Really excited, and this is, it's wheels motion, so.
So if I, I'll comment on that. I mean, for some of us who have been involved in public service for a long time, we have looked afar at what we used to call the three Cs, Columbus, Cleveland, and Cincinnati, who would be the most significant beneficiaries of whatever was happening at the state. And we kind of felt like we were left out of that process, at least in terms of being the recipients of any benefits that we could put our hands on from the state budgeting process. The big cities seem to kind of just control that, and we might get thrown in scrap here or there just so we wouldn't scream too loud, but this year's budgeting process was so different than that, and Fairfield County was recognized extensively in the budgeting process in a great number of ways, two of which result from resolutions here today, the one that Mr. Zadrak has made reference to, which is the $4.5 million for the benefit of our workforce development program. Another resolution that is on here today would be kind of a pass-through resolution. It's a little bit convoluted in its details, but the end result of the resolution would be a transfer from the state to the county of approximately $4.1 million for the benefit, ultimately, of Fairfield Medical Center. And so there'll be details worked out in terms of the timing and mechanism for that transfer, but at the end of the day, Fairfield Medical Center will be the recipient of that $4.1 million. So just in those two examples, Fairfield County thanks the governor, the lieutenant governor, of course, State Representative Ray, State Senator Schaefer, and many others who were involved in the process of convincing the legislature to include these items in the budget. The FMC one, okay, that's weird. I get it, us getting the money and then passing it to them and how it all works. I mean, that's a strange bird, but please know, for our community, not just because they're the largest employer, but regional hospitals across this country are struggling. I think in the past year or 12 have failed, and we will do anything and everything that we can do to prevent our community from experiencing the kind of devastation that many communities have experienced as a result of the failure of their regional hospitals. have experienced as a result of the failure of their regional hospitals. Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Court of Common, please, Resolution 2023-8.29.E, a resolution to authorize the establishment of a new fund in 2023 budget for the Backlog Reduction Project grant.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. I forgot to mention something. If you're curious as to which of the three commissioners might have been most involved in getting those other items I mentioned into the state budget, my colleagues, Commissioners Lavesey and Fix, did significantly more heaven lifting than myself. I'm just the president. Those guys made that happen from a county standpoint, many staff people as well. Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineers Office, Resolution 2023-8.29.F, a resolution to approve a change order for the CLA 12, FAI CR 12-0.001 16th Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items F, G, H, and I.
Second.
Discussion.
Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Further discussion? Well, I'll finish something. I was thinking about it earlier. We touched base with a number of our elected officials in the work session, the meeting that starts at 9:00 a.m. I'm always stunned at the history and the operation of Fairfield County, going back to prior to the three of us being commissioners. They would actually come in in the morning and vote, and then have to meet, which I thought was really weird. You talk about stuff after you already voted on it instead of prior to. Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Information Technology, Resolution 2023-8.29.J, a resolution for approval of change order number one to the contract between Industrial Technical Services and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-8.29.K, a resolution to approve additional operations by operating from unappropriated into, I'm sorry, appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Number 2072 Children's Services Fund.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-8.29.L, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated into a major expenditure object category, probate number 2,000 Probate Court Services, and a fund-to-fund transfer to guardianship services.
Under Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items L, M, N, and O.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Meals on Wheels Older Adult Agency, Resolution 2023-8.29.P, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated funds in a major expenditure object categories for Meals on Wheels OAFC Incorporated, Fund Number 2617.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-8.29.Q, a resolution authorizing the approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and Canal Winchester Local Schools.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items Q, R, and S.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. On payment of bills, Resolution 2023-8.29.T, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavesy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, September 5th.
Is there any other issue, item, that anybody would like to bring to attention to the Commission at this time? Here you go, and I'll accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll say, I got a motion to adjourn in a second. All those other officers are saying aye?
Aye.
A both same sign. The motion carries. The Commission is adjourned, and we do thank you all for coming.